The Board of Trustees Committee on Academic Affairs, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson Jill O'Donnell Torme.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Charles Shorter. Trustee Henry Berger.
Present.
Trustee Brian Oberfell.
Present.
Trustee Martin Burke.
Present.
The faculty alternate, Professor Luby Alatrist.
Present.
Musarat Lamia, the student rep.
Present.
Denisha Reyes, the student alternate. And the COPS liaison, President Vincent Boudreau. Okay, you have a quorum.
So this public meeting of the Committee on Academic Affairs is now called to order. On March 7th, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202 declaring a state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 13th, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202.1, which included a suspension of law allowing the attendance of meetings telephonically or other similar service. Article 7 of the Public Officers Law, to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by the law without permitting in public, in-person access to meetings and authorizing such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceedings and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. In accordance with the executive order, this board meeting is being held via video con- well, it's not video conferences, is it?
Teleconference, right, sorry, yes.
Teleconference with a live stream found at CUNY Board of Trustees website. A copy of the calendar agenda is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. As a reminder, please mute your audio so we can ensure that everyone can hear. I would like to ask the secretary to take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery and other guests. Gal?
Great, so a couple people just joined. Charlie, did you just join?
Yes.
Okay, great, so I just want to make sure we have marked you down. Okay, um, members of the Chancellery and other guests, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
Great, uh, okay. General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs, Derek Davis. Okay, Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost, Jose Luis Cruz.
Present.
Lucinda Zo, Senior University Dean and Vice Provost of Academic Programs and Policy.
Present.
Great. And Ernesto Yalongo, Chair of the Ostos College Senate, Department Chair and Professor of History at Ostos Community College.
Present.
Okay, thank you, Gal. Item one on our agenda is the report from the Executive Vice Chancellor. I now call Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Cruz for his report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, I am pleased to update the Committee on Progress Registered since we last met on matters related to academic policy, academic programs, and academic research, the three areas under the purview of this committee. I will take each one of these areas in turn and pause after each one to see if there are any comments or questions. First, academic policy. The Board of Trustees has played a pivotal role in CUNY's response to COVID-19 while advancing major university priorities through academic policies, including the special COVID-19 flexible grading policy, the special COVID-19 graduate admissions policy, the policy for the use of credit for prior learning, the policy to support the extension and continuance of distance learning and remote support services for the fall 2020 semester, and the special COVID-19 temporary suspension of standardized testing requirements for undergraduate admission. Today, I am happy to report that we have made great progress in translating all of these policies to practice. I know the Chancellor has kept you and the general public apprised of some of this progress and will be providing additional information as part of his report later this month. So I thought that'd use part of our time today to update you on the work we have been doing in preparation for spring 2021. In short, we're doing all we can to ensure that the university's decision-making about spring 2021 is not needlessly constrained by regulatory compliance issues that could otherwise be avoided. To this end, and as the university was conditionally authorized to do by the Board of Trustees on June 9th, 2020, we have asked campuses to prepare for the possibility that classes will remain mostly online and work will continue mostly remote in spring 2021. As part of these preparations and understanding that it seems unlikely that the United States Department of Education would extend emergency authorization for colleges and universities to offer programs that are 50% or more online beyond December 31st, we have asked campuses to focus their efforts on securing the requisite approvals from our accreditor, the Middle States Commission for Higher Education, for a mostly online spring 2021 to keep that option available to the university. The good news is most CUNY campuses have already submitted to MSCHE, the substantive change request needed to have distance education approved as an alternative delivery method, and are now in the process of working to notify the accreditor of the specific programs they could be offering in distance education in spring 2021. As part of these efforts, we have stressed with the campuses the need to ensure that the relevant shared governance bodies be included in and appraised of this process. Of course, in addition to Middle States, we need to comply with New York State Education Department guidelines. And I am happy to inform the Committee that earlier today, NICE extended the distance education waiver that has allowed us to function mostly online in fall 2020 to spring 2021. I will now pause to see if there are any questions about this high-level report on academic policy. I will now turn to brief, a brief report on academic programs. As many of you know from previous communications, we have done much to strengthen the quality of our online pedagogy and the remote provision of support services over the last few months. We have also announced important partnerships that will help inform and enhance our efforts in developing new programs that will lead to high-quality degrees and credentials that will provide our graduates with living family-sustaining wages and the opportunity for further study. This includes our engagement with the newly-formed New York Job CEO Council, the launching of CUNY's 90-day Upskilling Challenge with several leading information technology employers, and a historic $10 million grant from the Andrew W. Mellon Foundation that will, among other things, allow us to reimagine our Black Race and Ethnic Studies offerings. Again, I know the Chancellor has kept you and the general public apprised of some of these efforts, so I will pause here and see if there are any questions about this high-level report on academic programs.
Uh, Martin Burke, question?
That's what you're gonna do, yeah.
Yes. Go ahead, Martin.
Executive Vice Chancellor Cruz, this is related to the item you just raised and the one before that, and it harks back to a question that trustee Kim had posed to the Chancellor about two and a half weeks ago. What exactly will students who may be considering applying to or enrolling at CUNY know what the primary mode, modes of instruction will be in CUNY for the spring 2021 term?
Thank you for the question. As of now, what we have announced is preparation for a mostly online and remote support service environment in spring 2021, which is in accordance with previous authority extended by the Board of Trustees. But in that authority, there were some caveats. One, the decision needed to be based on the public health considerations at the time as well as the regulatory constraints. Today, I've been able to announce that we have surmounted one of the regulatory constraints, which is NICE, through their waiver, and are working to clear the Middle States accreditation requirements. So I believe that the earliest that the university could be able to definitively state what the spring 2021 would look like is once we complete this work with Middle States, which could be as early as late October. And so that's the timeline we're working on.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, I will now turn to a brief report on research. First, as you know, the reopening guidelines and conditions to restart research operations was treated as a separate process from general campus reopenings by the state. And our Office of Research has worked diligently with our campuses to establish their own research reopening plans. I am pleased to let all of you know that as of today, we have approved 11 campuses to implement their stage plans to reopen research. This includes the ASRC, Baruch, Brooklyn, City, Staten Island, Hunter, John Jay, Medgar Evers, Lehman, Queens, and York College. We have at least one more college who have submitted, which have submitted their reopening plans and are under review. Second, I wanted to mention that 21 faculty research teams across CUNY campuses have been awarded seed funding to mitigate climate change and adapt to its effects on the environment, health, water quality, technology needs, and other areas of our city and state through CUNY's new interdisciplinary climate crisis research grant program. We have high confidence that this seed funding will spawn highly competitive fundable projects that will help expand our impact and increase our ability to secure external funding to drive these projects to scale. Third, CUNY faculty also continue to work with students, scholars, to contribute to important advances in the battle against the COVID-19 pandemic locally and globally. A research project at Queens monitors the level of coronavirus in the communities that feed each wastewater plant in the city to assess its true prevalence and help identify new outbreaks before testing can, can, to guide health officials' response. A research project at the ASRC involves developing biological sensing technologies that detect the presence of coronavirus in surfaces and prevents them from surviving. Funded by NSF, a researcher at John Jay investigates bats, the suspected source of the coronavirus, to locate targets for potential immunization and medicine for humans. In addition, research addresses the anticipation of a major waste problem triggered by the increased use of plastic materials by medical workers by investigating ways to reclaim PPE materials. Fourth, I am pleased to inform that three CUNY faculty were the recipients of prestigious Early Career Development Awards, over $2 million in funds from the National Science Foundation. These five-year grants support early-career faculty with the potential to be academic role models in both research and education. The awardees are Professor Howell Su of City College, Professor Cheryl Carmichael of Brooklyn College, and Professor Zaptarski DeBroy of Hunter College and the Graduate Center. As a former NSF career award recipient myself, I am excited to see how these grants will accelerate our faculty's work in their chosen areas of study and the impact this will have, not only in the disciplines they serve, but the students they supervise and mentor. And finally, I wanted to share that the American Association of Community Colleges recently had its first National Undergraduate Research Experience Summit, and the CUNY Research Scholars Program, CRISP, was cited as an exemplar of community colleges providing research experiences to their STEM students. CRISP offers year-long mentored research experiences to 237 students at all 10 of CUNY's associate degree-granting colleges. I will now pause and see if there are any questions about this high-level report on research.
And this is Jill O'Donnell Torme. And from what you said, does that mean that the research labs throughout the university have not been open to this point? It's just gotten?
There are, well, there are 11 campuses that have received approvals. Approvals started to be awarded around July.
Oh, okay, so they haven't opened.
So, yes, they have been open and the approvals, the reopening plans are in stages, so they're all at different stages of reopening.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And if there are no other questions, I will now turn it back over to our chair.
Well, thank you very much. So let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that all board members are participating remotely, I will announce the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you would like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you are voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record, and let's try to avoid speaking over one another. We will take up the following items for approval. Action item 2A is the approval of the minutes of the June 8th, 2020 meeting. I move the approval of action item 2A. Do I have a second?
Second, Charlie.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we will now vote. Please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. That item passes unanimously. Action item 2B is the policy calendar. We are now going to take up items 2B-1 for approval. Policy item 2B.1 is a resolution requesting approval of the actions in the CAPRA dashboard. I now call Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Cruz to provide further background on this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course institutions in the university's general education program are presented to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research in summary form. Introduced in October 2019, the CAPRA dashboard makes it possible for trustees to interact with this summary data. A few highlights from this month's dashboard include: seven new or revised undergraduate policies and the classification of three new general education courses among colleges, giving students more options to study the physical sciences, mathematics, and the humanities. And finally, 19 program actions, including eight changes or additions to delivery modes. I will now turn it back over to the chair, yes.
Thank you very much. So I move the approval of action item 2B.1. Do I have a second?
Pervert, second.
Thank you. Any discussions? Hearing none, we will now vote. Please again, only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, that item unanimously passes. Item three on our agenda is an information item only. I now call again on Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Cruz to provide a report about the Pathways Initiative six-year review.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For some background on this informational item, on June 2011, the Board of Trustees Resolution on Creating an Efficient Transfer System, or the Pathways Resolution, was passed. The Pathways General Education Framework and Initiative was fully implemented two years later in fall 2013. The board resolution required an evaluation every three years, or every year, for the first three years and every three years thereafter. The task force that conducted the review this year, the first of the three-year reviews, was co-chairs by Dr. Bonnie August, Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs at New York City College of Technology, and Dr. Ernest Yalongo, Professor of History, Ostos Community College, and member of the university's Faculty Senate Academic Affairs Committee. Dr. Yalongo and Senior University Dean Lucinda Zo, who supported the task force's work, are on the line today to answer any questions from the committee should they arise. The objective of the review was to develop a comprehensive understanding of how the Pathways curricular structure and transfer guarantees relate to student momentum and to answer the fundamental question of whether or not Pathways was working as intended to support student momentum and progress towards degree and what had been the student experience since approval of this framework. The task force's extensive report has been shared with the committee beforehand and entered into the record, so I will just spend a few minutes now highlighting some key findings and recommendations. In terms of findings, number one, Pathways has not resulted in a large shift in the number of students who choose to transfer from associate programs early. The overall number of transfer students into baccalaureate programs has increased between fall 2012 and fall 2019. Over this time period, there was an increase of 57% in the number of transfer students with the associate degree, compared to an increase of 22% among those without the associate degree. Finding number two, the average time to degree for baccalaureate graduates declined between 2009, 10, and 2018, 19. This decline occurred for students who began at the college as first-time freshmen as well as for students who transferred to the college with an AAAS or AAS degree. Finding number three, CUNY students who transfer now have a larger amount of transferred coursework applied toward degree requirements at the receiving college. In fall 2012, approximately 35.4% of transfer courses applied toward general education, major or minor requirements, while in fall 2019, this had increased dramatically to 74.2%. Finding number four indicates that the number of credits applied toward students' college option requirements at senior colleges is consistent with Pathways policy. The transfer guarantees for college option courses are functioning for students who transfer from one baccalaureate college to another. Finding number five, the Pathways transfer guarantees for gateway majors are working properly. Approximately 82% of all gateway courses into majors transferred as equivalent to another gateway course at the receiving college, while an additional 14% transferred as equivalent to a non-gateway course at the receiving college. And finding number six, in some cases, local campus policies such as overlay and residency requirements conflict with Pathways policies and inhibits student momentum. Other campus-based policies may also violate Pathways, such as a limit on the acceptance of transfer credits from other CUNY colleges. And it is this finding that is highlighted in some of the recommendations presented in the task force's report. Among them, these recommendations: increasing the number of participating Pathways gateway majors, reviewing campus policies such as overlay requirements, residency requirements, and acceptance of transfer credit, increase awareness of the right of students to appeal the denial or restriction of transfer credit, and ensuring that student learning outcomes for Pathways courses are included on course syllabi, as well as bolstering support of those who serve on the Common Core Course Review Committee and improve awareness of the course review process in the campuses. In closing, with regards to this report, I want to thank Professor Yalongo and former Provost Bonnie August and Senior University Dean Lucinda Zo and all other members of the committee for a truly top-notch effort that started before the pandemic and continued steadily throughout it. I want to also inform the committee here that we recently launched the CUNY Transfer Steering Committee, which will be coordinating the implementation of many of these Pathways evaluation recommendations and has begun exploring multi-pronged strategies related to communications, training, policy development, technology, and more to improve the transfer experience for CUNY students. The Chancellor and I are committed to working with college presidents to implement the Pathways evaluation recommendations, and we will provide a progress report to this CAPRA committee on or before spring 2022, highlighting how campuses have advanced the Pathways recommendations and the policies and practices identified through the CUNY Transfer Steering Committee. As I said earlier, both Professor Yalongo and Senior University Dean Zo are on the line in case there are any questions. I will now turn it over to the chair.
Well, thank you very much. It certainly seems that this program has had some significant impact, and we look forward to the implementation of the recommendations so they can further reach its full potential. So does anyone have any questions or any discussion on this matter?
Uh, Martin Burke, question?
Yes, Marty.
Ernesto Lucinda, thank you for the great work. I'm sorry Bonnie's not here and the rest of the members of the team. But pardon me for playing the historian. I expect the Chancellor might remember, Lucinda, I think you do, and trustee Shorter may have been on the board at that time, but a previous chancellor and a previous university vice chancellor and provost in 2010 and 2011 made a very strong, consistent argument that what was driving the need for Pathways was the problem of excess credits. And I noticed both in your summary and then in your details that between 2009, 2010, and 2018, 2019, the average number of excess credits remained flat. Might you explain to me and to those of us who still carry some of the scars of the 2011, 2012 Pathways wars, how this might be accounted for?
Uh, sure, this is Lucinda. I'd be happy to. We noted this in the, in the report and in the recommendations, but one of the key features and one of the key policies of the Pathways project was that every course taken for credit, paid for by a student and taken for credit, must transfer from one CUNY college to another. Not only was it important that the courses would transfer as gen ed courses or major gateway courses, but the third promise, we called it the Pathways promise, was that all courses taken for credit must transfer. And that was not the case before Pathways. So ironically, you know, that it remains flat because all the courses must transfer. Prior to Pathways, all the courses did not have to transfer. Colleges did not have to take all of the courses. So it stands to reason that, of course, we would have, it would remain flat or it could even have gone up a little bit, that they would have excess credit. Now required to take all courses that a student had paid for upon transfer. And of course, the really good news is that prior to Pathways and then after Pathways, now, you know, close to 75% of those courses are transferring and counting for general education majors or electives.
And I would say that while the total number of credits may have remained flat, some of the additional findings in the report suggest that the average time to degree has declined. So certainly, many, a lot of work that still remains, and that will be the focus based on the recommendations in the years ahead. And we very much look forward, prior to spring 2022, to come back with some more exciting data points to suggest progress on behalf of our transfer students.
EVC Cruz, may I chime in?
Sure.
Of course. Marty, this is Ernesto Yalongo. All members, this is Ernesto Yalongo. The, the issue of excess credits is clearly incredibly important because we want our students to save money and we want them to get through as little debt as possible. But as was already mentioned, now that the time to completion has been reduced, thus successfully implementing one of the goals of Pathways, I think there's another issue here, but also an opportunity that is being raised. If we are now guaranteeing more and more of these courses are transferring to the four-year courses and we are shortening the amount of time that students are in fact in CUNY, those excess credits may be attacked in a different fashion, possibly by looking at advising of students at the campus level. And that is certainly outside the purview of Pathways, but that might be another way of attacking this issue of excess credits because the courses are in fact transferring and students are getting what they paid for. Thank you.
Ernest, and a follow-up, Jill, if you don't mind. Ernest, since both you and EVC Cruz raised the question of time toward degree, does the Pathways Committee suggesting that this is causal or correlative? The lower time to degree happened because of Pathways or could there have been other and many other factors at work for individual students and students as an aggregate?
EVC Cruz, would you like to begin?
Well, I would say that based on the, on the Pathways report alone, we could make a definitive response to that question. Certainly, in the past several years, there have been many other initiatives that the university and individual colleges have taken to try to reduce time to degree. So those, the effects of those, you know, academic momentum campaigns, for example, would need to be factored in. But certainly something that we can ask the Transfer Steering Committee that's looking at not only the recommendations from Pathways, but also how other initiatives across our system are impacting the success of our transfer students to look into and try to tease out how each of these different elements contribute to that.
And just to follow up, the, we requested significant data over a number of years pre and post implementation of Pathways to measure a direct impact of Pathways implementation. And it was clear that there was a direct impact that the time to degree completion was shortened. But in addition to that, the college options, the gateway majors, these courses are transferring as they're supposed to. Students are no longer taking these random courses as electives at their receiving college in as high a frequency as before. So in answer to your question, Professor Burke, yes, I do see a direct correlation between the implementation of Pathways and this shorter time to degree completion.
Thank you, Professor Yalongo, and thanks on the part of the UFTS to all members of the committee, especially to Dean Savage, who is probably our most articulate, entrenched critic of the Pathways Initiative when it was rolled out. And to see him sign off on this report years later is quite pleasing. Thanks.
And he served on the task force.
Well, thank you all. Is there any other discussion?
This is Philo.
Okay, yes, Philo.
Yeah, I just want to add and, and first, you know, thank our University Provost Cruz and the entire team and the, and the committee that, you know, we have some of the members in, in the call and dear friends, many of them, thank them for this very important work. Clearly, the, the report shows success. The report shows areas where we need to-
The report shows areas where we need to continue to dig deeper and, and work, and, and that's the agenda moving forward, and this whole issue of transfers and trying to find the way in which we can be the, the, the most efficient sort of integrated university at the service of our students and their academic momentum and their success, it's, it's, it's key for us. So, as our University Provost Cruz mentioned, we are very committed, the entire team and the Chancellor's office, in moving forward with the recommendations and advancing them and being able to both keep the trustees informed about what we find but also get the advantage of their feedback as we move forward. So, again, I just want to echo my, my total commitment to this effort and my gratitude to all who have participated in the process.
Thank you very much, Chancellor. So, with no other discussion, I would like to, and with no more items on the agenda, I'd like to move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I guess, I guess we don't have to say aye. It's if anybody opposes. So, I think we're adjourned. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.